All right. Good evening, everybody. It is seven o'clock and I would like to call the Kimberly City Council regular meeting for Monday, November twenty-fourth to order held here on the Olmans and the Tenahap peoples. Welcome, everybody. The, our, in our gallery tonight, folks from the Edible Gardening Greenhouse. Welcome to staff and have relatively short meeting tonight. I don't think I'm jinxing it by saying that. However, we do have a fairly lengthy number of items on camera tonight, so council, you're not going to get off early. So with that, I would like to ask Maurice if we have any late items.
There's no late items.
So hearing none, could I have a mover to adopt the agenda? Counselor Cairns, thank you very much. And Counselor McCain, seconds. All those in favor? Any opposed? That motion is carried. Next up, we have the minutes of the special meeting held on November the third. Please. Yeah, go ahead.
On last page, second paragraph, second sentence. After the comma, there's a bit that says what I implied. Can we just have that removed?
Sorry, page two?
The last page. Second paragraph. Second sentence.
What does that start?
And implied. Everything that talks about from implied on.
Seven, three.
Thirteen of the minutes.
Yep, everybody cool with that? Yep. Okay, so I will ask for a mover to adopt the agenda as amended. Counselor McCain, thank you. And Counselor McGuire, seconds. All those in favor? Any opposed? Next up, we have the minutes of the regular meeting of council held on November tenth. Please. Counselor Cairns, thank you. And Counselor Fox, seconds. All those in favor? Post, motion is carried. All right, statutory duties out of the way. We'll move on to our delegation this evening, which is the Kimberly Edible Garden and Greenhouse. Sue, you are speaking for the group. All right, floor is yours. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, and thank you for receiving us. I'm Sue Lissichuk, and I'm the current president of the Kimberly Edible Garden and Greenhouse Group. And with me tonight is most of our executive. Amy Clark, Director at Large, new-ish to Kimberly and new to the garden last year. Nolan McBarren, who's been a member for a great deal of the time. And is our secretary. Veronica Powell, Treasurer. And Jeremy Estroka, also a Director at Large. And just in time, Jill Walton, come in. Also, new-ish, three years now, Jill. This to Kimberly and new to the garden last year. Yuri Adank, who many of you would know, is still very much involved with the garden, but he's happily enjoying the warm weather and Mayan history in Guatemala at the moment, or he would have been here tonight as well. Just like that worked. Who we are. A very unique style of operating a community garden. I had never heard of this prior to moving to Kimberly, and I'm only aware of one other community garden who, that operates the way we do. Typically, members would pay for a plot, rent a row or a raised bed, and you garden by yourself. And you're responsible for everything. This gardening group is a collaborative, a collective. We plan together, we order seeds together, we plant, we weed, we water, and share the harvest together. And that has huge benefits. It's a really unique system, really encourages socializing, learning from each other, and covering for each other. So you can still go camping or go visit relatives out of the province even, and somebody else is weeding and watering while you're away. We have diverse membership. Our oldest members, we have a couple of members in their eighties. We have some young families with children. So this year, our youngest active gardener was a four-year-old. So four, five, and six-year-old children all the way up to the age eighty. Most are retired folks. But we have about a third of our members are young people and young families in their forties and thirties. So a really nice diverse membership. And we all agree on using sustainable, organic practices in the garden. We also all agree on strengthening local food security. So a portion of what we produce each week, we donate to the Healthy Kimberley's Food Recovery Depot. We also share gardening advice and knowledge. Anybody who wants to come and join us at a work bee, or we've also worked through social media, through teaching workshops at the library. I got a bit more of that later on. Excuse me, I'm just getting over a cold as well. We also collaborate with other agencies, particularly those associated with food security. So Healthy Kimberly, Wildsite, the Kimberly Cranbrook Food Network, we're a member of that, and participate in their meetings and activities.
Sandra, can you, can you please mute?
Yes.
Thanks.
Do I have to aim this at anything to make it forward? Sorry. There we go. Okay. Sorry, I was supposed to go forward to that one prior. So now on slide four. There we go. So where we've come from, some history. In 2014, a group of friends and acquaintances started a gardening project at the Lions Club Manor up on Church Avenue. It was under the auspices of the Kimberly Seniors Project, and really had no formal structure, per se, just a group of gardeners who initially really were hoping that residents in the manor would come, join them, and socialize and enjoy some healthy, freshly grown, organic produce. There was limited success, I'm told, in getting residents to join the group. I joined just in 2018, before that project ended, and we were asked to find a new place to garden. So in 2020, the city was approached. There we go. And we moved to the townsite location. As many of you will remember, that decision by the city to allow us to use that land was controversial, to say the least. And I very well remember some social media posts that said, "Community gardens always start off with great intentions, and then after a couple of years, they turn into eyesores." Not in my neighborhood, thank you very much. So there certainly, we started off well aware that there were concerns, and bound and determined to prove that even a vegetable garden could be beautiful, and that we would maintain it and look after it. And I think we have succeeded in that and won over the majority, at least, of the neighborhood. In that first year, only one of our thirty members lived in townsite. Now we have nine households who are within two blocks of the garden. And we hear regularly, as people go walking by the garden, walking their dogs or out for a walk, saying, "The garden is so beautiful." And even better, some of them say, "You know, I was one of the people who objected originally." So we're rather proud of that progress in terms of how we've grown. The, the other part in terms of growth was, it became more formalized. It had been a very casual group. We became a registered nonprofit society, and began kind of a formal working relationship with Food Recovery Depot, and working with them to provide them with what would best meet their needs each week. So we've continued to evolve over the five years. Membership was increased up to thirty, and we recently had our AGM and agreed to increase it up to thirty-five. Relationships, I mentioned this already, have increased with Healthy Kimberly, with Wildsite, the Food Bank, and a number of other agencies. Our educational efforts have grown to include running the seed exchange program at the Kimberly Library and offering some seed-starting workshops, and inviting people to come to the garden any Saturday at our work bees and, and ask questions or watch, learn as we transplant, prune, do whatever's required in the garden that particular week. We were asked to be a part of the garden tour this summer, and specifically asked if we would be the information site. So we had a display and handouts for people who came. Information gathered from TopCrop and other local resources. And they've recently asked us if we would be a regular annual participant in that tour, serving that kind of a purpose. Our vegetable production per square foot has more than doubled. We've experimented with more intensive planting, with raised wide-row gardening. So in a space where you might normally have one or two rows of carrots, now we have four or six. However, I'm going to leave that right there. We had a strategic planning workshop this summer. Amy volunteered to facilitate the process. We combined surveys of all members, as well as a slightly different one for the board, and then an in-person three-hour workshop for all the members of the board. We developed a strategic plan, which members approved at the AGM. And in that, we established three priorities. And not in any particular order of priority, but number one was, we needed to expand our garden capacity. Think space and production. We feel we're close to maximizing what we can get from that existing space. Although we're going to try some new things next year with some more vertical gardening and so on. Another priority is to strengthen organizational capacity. We're very well aware that the majority of members are older, and that every organization needs to stay fresh and replace themselves, and executive members should be mentoring and recruiting others to take over those kinds of positions. We also want to modernize our, our structure, our record-keeping, our having a shared drive where documents are managed, tracking planting schedules and varieties, and the kinds of things that will help those who come behind us. And our third priority was increasing our community education and collaboration activities. So that brings us to one of the reasons we're here tonight. We have two requests of council. Obviously, our five-year lease is coming to an end, and we are requesting that you renew that with us, please, and allow us to continue gardening at our current site. But the second part is, we would like to request some additional space. The space immediately adjacent to where the garden currently is. So here's our sketch, our proposed expansion. Our current garden space is about fifty-four hundred square feet, and we have a perennial herb bed, a greenhouse, a five-bin composting system, and thirty planting beds. And just for reference, with thirty members, that's kind of the same as each one having one row. So even in terms of producing enough produce for ourselves and to donate, we really have maxed out with, with that amount of space. But besides increasing production overall, we want to expand into some berries, some fruit trees, flowers, an area. We will continue to have flowers for pollination and, and decoration, but we want to increase that as well. So our requested expansion would approximately double our square footage. And just to show you a slightly bigger view. This proposal maintains, there's a very well-worn walking path where local residents walk their dogs or take their kids off to the park in the corner. And so using this same fence line will maintain that access and that path. And then, as you can see, between what is the east, proposed east fence, and the lawn bowling area that's fenced off, there's a nice, long rectangle, which would be even more enclosed with a fence line, where people will frequently come and let their dogs off-leash and throw a ball or a frisbee for them. So that area would still be available for community use as well. Most of us would say, we rarely have seen actually, actually seen anybody using the space that we're requesting, that we expand to. And of course, we'd obviously work with Public Works. I know there's underground water sewer lines, there's underground irrigation. So the exact area where that fence line would run obviously is open for negotiation and to confirm it works for the city. We would also propose to put in a large enough gate so that city crews could bring anything they needed to deliver or take from the storage area in the building that they use. So thank you for your time.
Awesome.
I'm open for questions.
For the presentation. Perfect tone, too. Counselor McCain, start us off.
All right. Well, thank you for the presentation. This is, this is a space that is pretty near and dear to my heart, since I spent a lot of time in the pool there when I was a kid. But what, what you folks have done up there is, is really wonderful. And I think just appreciating the, the the fact that you, that you listen to folks who had concerns, and, and you address that. And, and you've, you, you've maintained the space, and it, and it looks really, looks great. I like the fact that you also recognize that, you know, membership needs turnover, you need better organization, or I guess improved organization. So to me, that, that just lends a lot of confidence when you, when you, when you're talking about, you know, having a drive to, you know, house documents. I mean, that just shows, that gives me confidence that you guys are really, really serious about what you're doing, and yeah, so I really appreciate that. I think with respect to the space, that the additional space that you're asking, I mean, really, that, I think, in, you know, Jim, you may have some input there, but I think that's just pool infill, the majority of it. So I don't think you're going to have too many infrastructure problems. And like I say, I've, I've been, I've been impressed with the project, and I really like what it's all about, bringing community together, and I'm in support of expanding that space out a little bit more.
Thank you. And actually, if I can just speak to that point, we, we did get copies of, of where exactly the pool was and what was used for fill, because we're gardening. And then had opinions from two different environmental scientists who said, really, you know, any asbestos or lead that were in the concrete blocks and the things that were thrown in the bottom of the pool, those chemicals, they would leach downward and not be a concern for our garden. Trees might be another matter, but again, scoping it out, if we plant fruit trees, they would be outside the area where the pool had been.
Further. Go ahead, Counselor Cairns.
Thanks for the presentation, and thanks for the amazing work. And I pass by the garden every day, sometimes twice a day, and it does, it looks, it looks great. And yeah, you know, to reiterate Jason's comments to just the fact that you have kind of governance in place and a strategic plan, and you're thinking about the future. That, that would be, you know, one of my main concerns around this would be just, you know, the assurance that going forward, it's going to be, it's going to be well-managed as well. And it sounds like you've got, you're, you're doing the work. You're doing the, the background work to, to have that in place. And I think the idea of a pollinator garden and fruit trees and berries, that type of thing, I just think that's really lovely. And, you know, I know there's been lots of discussion over time about having pollinator gardens or doing some kind of, you know, just encouraging people, educating a little bit around pollinator gardens. And I think it'd be really nice to see, you know, a demonstration of what that looks like, that people can potentially duplicate in their gardens. And it's a nice high-elevation site that helps people understand what's actually possible at that elevation. So I think it's, you know, it really is beneficial in terms of that demonstration piece and learning and and then contributing, contributing healthy food. So yeah, appreciate what you're doing. And I'd be interested in your plan for, you know, applying for funding to, to do the fencing and all of that kind of thing, the costs that are associated with it.
Yes, we've thought about that as well. And we have three potential scenarios, which I like to call the good, the bad, and the ugly. The good being the biggest vision, the most beautiful, also the most expensive. Because the fencing was moved from the old, not even Church Avenue, the old community garden down in Centennial Parking Lot. It's not actually deer wire, deer fencing. So yes, it keeps the animals out, but guess what? Those skinny little heads and necks come through, and if we plant anything too close, they manage to help themselves to half a dozen of our tomato plants this year, and a bunch of the beans. And, and that's such a good growing area to have a fence line that things can actually be used, use it as a trellis. So for practical reasons, we would like to refence the entire area, if we're granted a larger area, or that existing area, even if not. And so on that note, I met this summer with James Woodall from Columbia Basin Trust. He, they funded our greenhouse, and he toured our operation in the greenhouse and really encouraged us to apply for a grant and apply for the Cadillac model with obviously no guarantees, and it might be cut in half or cut in three-quarters, but possibly could be done in stages. And so that's kind of the best type option. We do have young, healthy members who said, "We can build a fence. We don't need to pay twenty thousand dollars to a contractor." We've had quotes. We have a few different sketches. And so there would absolutely be donation of, in kind of labor. And the kind of worst-case scenario, if we don't have funding, is, I should be able to run this backwards, right, or not? The current, the current east-facing fence line that goes from the corner to the building would be in the middle of the new space, so we could lift it and pivot it ninety degrees. And so the lowest-cost option, excuse me, would be simply to add, it's a less than a hundred feet of fencing, and which we could do on our own if, if need be. We've also stepped up our fundraising efforts. I didn't mention that in the presentation, but we've realized that our garlic sales in October could be a great cash crop for, to, to help us with our sustainability. And so to that end, this year, we planted a thousand cloves. So that will also help contribute to our, our funding.
Further?
Thank you. And I, I just have to comment that I got some seed garlic from you a couple of years ago. And I have to say, my, my bulbs are, like, my clothes are the size of bulbs. So they're very good. I highly recommend them.
Yes, they are. That's four years of using our own seed stock in the same location in a Kimberly climate. So yeah.
So it's hard to believe this has been five years. That whole conversation seems pretty fresh. Five years, a long time. I think the big difference now, going forward, is that five years ago, nobody knew what this was going to look like. They, there, there just was nothing known around what this would turn out. After five years, it's a known commodity. You've done an outstanding job. And I think that the, you know, the neighborhoods up there are going to, are going to look at this a whole lot differently than they, than they did five years ago. So I guess, a little help here, Jim. I think with the five-year lease renewing conversations surrounding any expansion would be part of that conversation, would it?
Yeah, I think referral back to staff for a report to come forward with the the current agreement attached and for, sorry. Counselor, to have a discussion about amending and renewing. Troy, were you involved in that one at the get-go, or was that corporate services?
I think it was a combination of departments, but, you know, we can make sure to get a report together on that.
All right, awesome. Thanks very much for the presentation, Sue, and everybody else for being here in a supporting role. We will chat again.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
You're all good? Okay, next up is the Bylaw twenty-seven ninety-six, which is the Kimberly Sewer Rates and Regulations Bylaw. This is for consideration of first, second, and third reading. Can I have a mover, please? Counselor Cairns moves, and Counselor McCain, second. Pardon me, seconds. Discussion. Anything further on this, Krista?
No, Mr. Mayor, this is just in response to the resolution that council passed at the last special budget meeting held last Monday, where the council approved a five percent increase to sewer flat rates for 2026. So the bylaw amendment incorporates that five percent increase onto the flat rates within that bylaw, and it's to fund operate, increases to operational expenditures to see inflationary increases, plus an incremental increase to contributions to reserves for sewer infrastructure.
Yeah, all right. Thank you for that. Yeah, it's worth noting, certainly for the public, that the Water Fund and the Sewer Fund are completely independent, and they are funded by the utility fees in its entirety. The only time additional money would come into play is if there's a grant or something associated with a major project. So we need to be keeping a close eye on what we need for infrastructure renewal. And that's, that's the whole reason for taking the increases we are in, in the financial plan. Okay. Any further comments, counsel? All the question, all those in favor? Any opposed? Were you opposed, Kevin, or? Okay. Did you want to make a comment at all? Counselor Dunlop is opposed. That motion is carried. Next up, we have bylaw, pardon me, twenty-seven ninety-seven, which is the Water Works Rates and Regulations Bylaw. Again, for consideration of first three readings. Mover, please. Counselor McGuire, thank you. Counselor McCain, seconds. Discussion. Any discussion, counsel? All the question, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried. Okay, next up, we have the 2026 regular council meeting calendar. A view into the future, counsel. I know that Jasmine has been asking about any plans or whatnot for next year. I don't know about you, but I don't look beyond probably the next two weeks. So we'll just have to roll the dice on some of this. However, if you've had a look at those dates, is there anything that jumps out for anyone? Yep, the, the four-year event. Okay. Hearing, hearing no further comments or requested changes, I'll call the question, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion is carried. All right, we'll go back and do that one more time. Counselor McGuire moves, and Counselor McCain, seconds, which is where I thought that was. Counselor McGuire moves, and Counselor McCain seconds, which is where I thought that was. All those in favor. That motion is carried. Okay, next up, we have correspondence, and we just have one item to receive this evening. Mover, please. Counselor McCain, thank you. And Counselor McGuire, seconds. Any comments? Call a question, all those in favor. Go ahead. Yeah. Call a question, all those in favor. Opposed, that motion is carried. So next up, we have a petition that was received in this past short while, and the motion on the floor is that council receive the petition to improve Boulevard accessibility and safety at 220 St. Arias Avenue. Could I move her, please? Counselor Karen's moves, and Counselor McGuire's seconds. Discussion, go ahead, Counselor Karen's.
I mean, I was actually just one grand emotion.
Okay, yeah, so Jim, I'll maybe get you to follow on with this. There has been a lot of engagement. It's my understanding that this is now coming back or could come back to council through the Accessibility Committee. I think the item is put on the agenda for the next Accessibility Committee meeting, and we'll see what comes of, any recommendations they may have. That's the pathway right now. Go ahead.
Yeah, and the second part of that resolution there is that it be referred to staff for submission of a staff report. And I think, I think the last time that council engaged with the property owner was the end of October, but I think it might be helpful to council for staff to bring back a bit of an account on the engagement that's been had and what's been done. And then, out of that report, council can provide some direction on how to proceed.
Awesome. Thanks, Jim. Everybody okay with that? Hey, call the question on receipt, all those in favor. That motion is carried. I've kind of broken this up into two, so we'll do the second part of that, which is that council refer the petition to staff for submission of a staff report to be considered in a future meeting. Counselor McGuire moves, Counselor McCain seconds, all those in favor. Motion is carried. Awesome. Thanks for that, counsel. Okay, I mentioned it was going to be pretty quick. That's our regular meeting. Could I have a motion to move in camera? Counselor McGuire, thank you. And Counselor Karen, seconds, all those in favor. That motion is carried. Sandra, going to have to... I guess you're going to have to come back in on a different link, Sandra.